Good afternoon and welcome to our first meeting in April. We appreciate those of you in our audience tonight and those of you who are watching us on our Electric City Television. Our lead is an invocation tonight and respects to the flags will be given by Councilmember Steve Curvin. Please rise.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many opportunities that you have put before us today. We thank you for all the blessings of our community, both in our city and our surrounding areas. We ask that you help this policymaking board make wise decisions in regards to the operations of our city. As always, we ask that you protect those that work for us, those who are on our team, both those who put themselves in harm's way nearly every day and those who work behind the scenes to make sure that everything runs here safely. And Father, we ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of things before we start on the body of our minutes and right now I'm gonna ask our chief Jim Stewart to come up and we have his swearing in tonight and I'm gonna ask Jim to bring up a couple of members of his family and introduce them.
I'd like to bring up my dad Jim Stewart, also my mom and stepfather Bruce and Barbara Rogers, and my daughter Stephanie Stewart.
Chief, what is your name? Raise your right hand. Stephanie is on the team because I have more states than she.
Good point.
First we'll get through this constitutional oath. I, Jim Stewart, as chief of police of the city of Anderson.
As chief of police of the city of Anderson.
The solemnly swear.
The solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
To exercise the duties.
To exercise the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
thereof.
thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
And protect.
And protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And we'll wrap it up with the state secretary of office, I, Jim Stewart.
I, Jim Stewart.
As chief of police.
As chief of police.
Of the city of Anderson.
Of the city of Anderson.
For equally, fairly.
For equally, fairly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Do the best of my ability.
Do the best of my abilities.
And skill.
And skills.
Exercise the trust.
Exercise the trust.
With pros to me.
With pros to me.
And we use my best endeavors.
And we use my best endeavors.
Preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to law.
According to law.
For the purpose of which I've been elected.
For the purpose of which I've been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Chief.
Just wanted to say a few comments tonight. This is a momentous occasion for me. Recognize my dad, he was a city councilman here for, many don't know it, back in the sixties, from sixty-two to sixty-five. Growing up here at PD, I felt like I matured, held a lot of jobs, different positions, and kinda went up through the ranks here. I have plans, just as any chief would, I wanna continue the partnerships that's been laid. The foundation in our community is our community partnerships and as I often say, when I go to the community meetings, those people are our eyes and ears. I wanna continue the great job of training that's been done down at this department, also the technology as far as this year. In the last eight months of the interim status, we've applied for numerous grants and wanna continue the great job that the city police department has done here as far as advancing the technology. And lastly, the structure. In the past year, we've kinda went from a pattern of restructuring the department to really structuring it and the foundation of that is our patrol division, which is the uniformed officers you see out on the street. That is the main goal, is those guys in uniform. We're gonna structure that to get some more assets to the guys out there. I'm very humbled to have been chosen for this position. It's an honor to wear this uniform. Thank you.
Now I'm gonna ask, we have a special recognition within the fire department, I'm gonna have to ask Chief Horn to come up.
Member of the council and city manager, congratulations to Chief Stewart, look forward working with him. In our annual report to council, you'll notice that we credit our medical first responder program with from eleven to fifteen actual saves per year. In January of this year, we developed a program that will recognize firefighters that are responsible for these saves. As I was updating the city manager about the program, they thought it'd be a good idea to make a presentation here in front of council. So we really appreciate the opportunity. Since January first, our department has been credited with three saves so far. We've had eight firefighters that have been nominated for this lifesaving award and five of them have actually received it. So for every firefighter that does receive the award, remember there's two more in the shadows that didn't get it. So without further ado, do you have a lot to call out the firefighter Billy McColl? Billy, on February thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen, fire station will receive a call in the wreck at fifteen oh six Truggle Street. Your engine responded, it was your task to take care of the first male subject you found there. The patient wasn't breathing. You reestablished an airway for the victim, he started breathing on his own and this was directly related to the actions. So on behalf of the city of Anderson, Anderson Fire Department, allow to present you with a certificate of commendation for actions that contributed to saving a life. And we also have the ribbon that you'll wear on your Class A uniform from this day forward.
The minutes of our March twenty-fifth meeting have been distributed, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing any, do I have a motion to approve? First by Mr. Stewart.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, minutes of March twenty-fifth passed unanimously. Having no new business, old business, we'll move directly to new business. My first request of new business is request consideration, a reapportment to the Board of Commissioners of the Anderson Housing Authority. Mr. Moore.
Mr. Mayor, council Emily Owen, who you appointed three years ago, her terms expired on the Anderson Housing Authority. Jeff Frannum, the executive director, has recommended her again, she's agreed to serve. So we would recommend that you appoint her for a five-year term to end in December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. You can see that she'll serve with Jason Fattick, McLester McDowell, Chase Christopher, and Charlie Irvin.
Any questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, I originally appointed Ms. Owens several years ago, I think she brings great expertise to the board, she owns her own accounting business, so with that, I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint her.
First by Mr. Stewart.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have a new appointment to the, reapportment to the Anderson Housing Authority. Thank you. We appreciate the work that they all do, that's a worthy board. Our second item of new business is request consideration of a resolution for a police mutual aid agreement with the city of Belton. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one and the next one, I'll kinda talk about together, the city of Belton, the other ones with the Anderson County Sheriff's Department, these are requests for mutual aid, I think, but maybe the city attorney will have to refresh my memory, I think for thirty-some-huh years I've signed these and we've always had mutual aid, but it's a little more standard now and appreciate Frankie for drawing these up. But these are in case of emergencies or situations where we would go in, stand by or help, or vice versa, where the folks would come in and help us. We have these in the fire and the police area. So again, we would recommend those, I'll let Frankie and another chief, Chief Stewart's still here, if they wanna speak to some of the specifics.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory, there's a statute, space statute that provides for this, that this agreement basically goes by those provisions. You're allowed to interchange.
Ms. Lockridge?
Is this just in case of emergency situation?
Basically.
Okay.
Just curious, I know we just singled out Belton and Anderson County, but I know we have other underlying municipalities like Wimston, Pelzer, Iva, are there plans to, you know, have a true county-wide adoption or is this just the first two that came to the plate?
Yes, sir, these are just the two firsts that came and they solicited the city. We haven't went out yet, but we will upgrade those with Wimston and Iva and Honey Path.
Any other questions, comments?
I move that we adopt this resolution.
Are we gonna take them together or separate?
The first resolution to
First by
With city of Anderson and city of Belton.
First by Ms. Lockridge.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it and passes unanimously.
Make a motion that we accept the agreement between the city of Anderson and Anderson County for mutual aid?
First by Mr. Stewart.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. For a discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, council.
I'm sorry?
So thank you.
Yes. And I think that's, I mean, it's a good idea, I think.
It's a great idea.
With resources being as scarce as they are, we need to have more, I guess, agreements or memorandums or understanding between agencies. Our fourth item's request consideration to purchase various items, equipment for the recreation center complex. Mr. Moore.
I'm gonna ask Bobby to come and then help me with this one, but the bottom line is the recreation committee met and looked at some various equipment that would complete the bond issue. The main thing was a new sign out front, probably the more expensive piece, and then some other things that would work, that's in number four. And then we've had a great demand on our cardio equipment and we're gonna replace that. So I'll let Bobby give you some of the specific numbers and what you'll be doing is two things. In number four, you would be allocating the final bond proceeds for this equipment and the bids have already been received or in the case of the sign, the recreation committee looked at a number of signs. And then in the case of the cardio equipment, you'd be awarding the low bid per the recreation committee and Bobby's recommendation's solid. Bobby, take it from there.
Thank you, John. The first one is the remaining bond funds. We had asked for, to look at purchasing a new information sign on Murray Avenue and we asked the companies to submit design build that would complement our building. You have two pictures there, the original one was the open air on top and then the other one was one that was filled in after meeting with the rec committee, there was some discussion about look. That company is Right Light Signs from Concord for a total of sixty-three thousand four thirty-four. CNW would supply the power for eight hundred and fifty bucks to that was the first item. The second item that we were asking for was additional fencing on seven products, seven on Stevens Street to secure that area. We wanna take the fence down along Stevens Street, but we need to secure the sides, this was a quote from Faulkner Fence, to extend the additional fencing down to the flume that would help protect our complex and be able to remove that old fence that's along Stevens Street right now. The third item was a floor scrubber to, for the rec center, the one that we have is currently almost seven years old and we need a more up-to-date one to help keep the floors in our facility clean. And then awnings for our doors on Murray Avenue side, we need some awnings to help keep the rain away from the door and those kind of things. So we asking for four awnings and then twenty-five hundred for a flagpole that would be installed at the new area that would serve the two fields that we opened up next week.
Where are the awnings again, in the front?
The awnings are on the side, the one on Murray Avenue side where the double doors going outside the gym, outside that exit door and then we have a room downstairs, multipurpose room, that's also on the Murray Avenue side that would help keep the water away from those doors along with the two on the other side.
Ms. Chapman?
Let's have a quick question with, regarding the signs, you know, normally we try to use local businesses, but I noticed that, I know there's a nineteen millimeter and a sixteen millimeter, but there's a twenty thousand dollar difference, I was just curious why we went to the, the direction we did or the committee went to that direction.
The sixteen is a higher resolution that would allow graphics and it's a more crisp look as far as the wording and whatever you put on there. We could actually take pictures, upload those and so it would say for the difference. The nineteen millimeter is what a lot of people use, it's just not very clear, the sixteen is a higher resolution.
Was ISAM not avail, or couldn't make that as one of their bids?
That's not what they
Okay, was it, that's how it was bid to be a nineteen or a sixteen?
It was a sixteen with, or nineteen with a sixteen option kind of thing.
Okay.
And their design, again, we asked them to design build, we didn't give them as far as specifications for how the sign would look, they submitted those, this was the sign that most complement our building, the rec committee looked at the different proposals and they were in agreement that this was the best design that would complement the building.
Okay. Now didn't one of these, didn't this company bring something on site for you guys?
They brought an actual board on site and they also brought the programming software to show us how to program it and how easy it was, they were the only company to do that.
So on the Stevens Street property, it'd be fenced to where nobody can get on, I mean, it'd be completely fenced?
You have to go through the flume, you could go
On all three sides?
Yeah.
On three sides? Yeah.
Yeah, it would, we closed off Stevens Street with some fencing, this would take the fencing on down to the flume and you'd have to cross through the flume to get up to our facility.
But the main thing was to get the fence down so when we open up the two ball fields, we've taken Stevens Street out, that families or even teams warming up, once we get all the dirt spread and grass back, there'll remain green space until you give the go-ahead for phase three or four for the other ball fields and the tower. So it'll be a nice green space that will lead down to the flume and eventually the Lindley Park extension for our greenways.
Now do we ever say whether we was going with option one or option two on the sign?
Well, that was
I know you got both of them in here and a pack and I know there's preferences.
Yeah, either one, same, I know Mr. Lockridge liked number two, the
Number one.
Buck liked number one, so I, for us, we just would like to have
We go with number one, that's all right, Mr. Lockridge, and then we don't like, we can always close it in.
Okay, that's fine.
What would that be closed in with for number two?
Aluminum?
What would you close it in with?
Well, I would think some kind of aluminum or something like that, wouldn't you think?
Any other questions, comments? That must have been an inside committee joke?
It was, it was. I move that we adopt these purchases.
First by Ms. Lockridge.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. We have, my last item is request consideration to purchase cardio equipment for the recreation fitness area. Mr. Moore?
Again, Mr. Mayor, council, this went before the recreation committee on March the fourteenth to upgrade our equipment for the cardio and then we're gonna try to get the whole recreation exercise on a rotating basis. And so you can see, again, these are not always apples and apples on bids, so we looked at the programs that got the pieces of equipment that we would need in this program, the twenty-two pieces are from Matrix, they have a lot of guarantees, they have a lot of really pretty neat stuff as far as helping you identify the hours of use and replacement time, I'm not going to all those unless you have a question, so we're just recommending you buy the twenty-two pieces from Matrix for eighty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Thank you, any questions?
What kind do we have now?
We've got True, we've got Life Fitness, we've got just a hodgepodge of stuff that we've collected over the years.
No Matrix?
We have a Matrix treadmill and a Matrix rover.
Have you had any noticeable difference in the serviceability and durability of the different types?
Well, we've had issues of service, of getting parts from Life Fitness, I think that's been the biggest, they're so big that little companies like us just are not on their radar. So we've had some issues of trying to get the correct part in, we've actually been on the phone with a part in our hand and they say the part doesn't exist. So it's, we've had some challenges with that. The True equipment was given to us by BASF three years ago, I think, and so we've used that, but again, twenty-two pieces are really six to seven years old and lifespan is usually four to five years depending on the use, which we like about the Matrix because they actually have a program where you can monitor the usage of each machine. If somebody has a special machine, they want a treadmill that they always wanna use and it's getting used a lot, you can move those treadmills around. We like using the whole equipment because the boards are the same on any machine, so once you use a treadmill, you can use a bike or elliptical because the control panel or the screen is basically the same on each
And I take it you've personally tried out all of these?
I have, yes. Not very long, but I have.
Good answer.
I just have one.
Ms. Chapman?
I just wanna make sure, the eighty-six two sixty-four, that includes the three thirty-four or three thirty, the thirty-three hundred one-time fee plus the cap?
Yes.
The cap program, the fifty-two hundred?
Well, that, those are, that figure is given to us, that's the value, the parts that they give us, that's not in that bid.
Okay.
But the asset management program is a part of that eighty-six.
Okay, so the fifty-two, the fifty-two hundred, that's coming?
That's parts that they give us, that we put in our inventory, that are the most replaced parts, that we don't have to wait on a part to get here, we already have it in stock, all we gotta do is wait on the first
And we don't have to ask for a part and they don't know what it is, right?
Yeah, so it's really
It's a value though.
It is, we're getting another fifty-two hundred dollars worth of value.
Okay. Any other questions?
We accept this cardio equipment.
First by Dr. Thompson, second by Mr. Lockridge. For a discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Thank you.
Minister of Briefer, Mr. Moore?
Just a couple of things, the first one regards the joint city-county committee, wanted to bring you up to speed, the members of that committee are Mr. Curvin, Mayor
And Matt Harbin.
Housestewart and Matt Harbin. They've had a couple of meetings where they've interviewed three firms that submitted a request for qualifications to assist in this process and I'll let them speak if they'd like, but the committee, which again, our four included Mr. Crowder and Mr. Dunn from the county, the consensus was after interviewing all of them that they'd like to proceed with Davenport and Lawrence from Charleston, South Carolina, to attempt to put together a scope of services and a contract. So like any other RFQ, they may or may not be successful in getting what they want, but they judge them to be the most qualified. So if there are no objections, the committee will plan to meet probably in the near future with Davenport and Lawrence, we're drafting up a scope of services and an initial price. And again, this would be kind of a big picture view of the best opportunities where the city and county could work together, share a service and save money. So those would be, rather than have a preconceived idea of what might be the best way to go, they've done this in other communities and gets you off to a little better start where you're more likely to be successful. So
I think that said it all, anybody? Curvin?
Again, it's just, all you're doing is, this lets you know that they'll be proceeding.
I think, um.
We need approval.
County council will bring that in front of their body.
Next Tuesday.
Their next meeting. And I don't think at this point we're not voting on anything, it's just more of a information only.
Whatever we come up with will have to come back for approval on both sides, so.
We're kind of doing it like we normally go through, a lot of our processes that we've gone through.
It will come back, I guess, on administrative briefing to be voted on at the next council meeting, just like any other committee decision.
Like a other committee reporter, okay?
Is everything going well?
Yeah, I mean, I think it was, we interviewed three firms, um, a firm out of Georgia, this South Carolina firm and a firm out of Ohio. And, um, and I think.
Has success.
Both, well, both sides kind of came to the agreement that we would let somebody give us a, a ten thousand foot view of our community, so it's, it's going well.
It's not going to cost, is it?
No, I hope not, it won't cost that much, I hope. All right, anything else?
Cost that much, it'll be a lot more.
Two other things, number one, number two would be the monthly progress report, you have that before you, we are still working on some things from the past retreat that we hope to have to you pretty soon, and then I would like to call your attention to the calendar, especially this coming Thursday night, the city of Anderson is the host for the Anderson County Municipal Association meeting. So if you haven't already RSVP'd with Brandy, please do so, and we'd like to have all of our council members and your spouses are welcome too. The other big thing that you've given us some approval on is next Tuesday, the sixteenth, is the first council ceremonial pitch at the new ball fields, and we'll start that at five forty-five at the new fields. So please, that's a big event for our community, so I hope you'll be there. Block party, supposed to got underway last Thursday, but the weather held it off, so should be cranking up this Thursday.
Since it's in my district, can I throw out the ball?
Well, I think all of you gonna throw it, so get your arms warmed up. Bobby's got a plan, he hasn't told me yet, so I'll, that'd be your surprise.
I heard Dr. Thompson could rip about eighty miles an hour, he better get ready.
Mr. Mayor, we do need a few minutes of your time in executive session regarding contractual legal advice, and that pertains to the recreation center project we talked about.
Entertaining the motion, go into executive session.
So long.
First one, Mr. Stewart, second by Mr. Lockridge, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing in executive session. Stand in executive session. Come out of executive session. First by Mr. Lockridge, second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? We're out of executive session. We had heard a update on a contractual legal advice from our city attorney in regards to a Recreation Center project. There will be nothing that will be added to the agenda at this time to take action on. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.